We'll call the city council meeting to order on Monday, August 18th at 7:00 PM, and ask the city recorder to call the roll.
Council President Briggs.
Here.
Counselor Bariantos.
Yes.
Counselor Blaser.
Here.
Counselor Fitzgerald is excused. Counselor Hozapple.
Here.
Counselor Jantsch.
Here.
Counselor Schilling.
Here.
Counselor Shane.
Here.
Counselor Spivey.
Here.
We have a quorum. Well, everyone, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Brian, we have some introductions this evening.
We do. Thank you, Mayor Slacks. So I'll invite our Public Works Director, Jennifer Ward, to come up and make a couple of introductions for her department.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. Mr. Mayor, last month, or last meeting, I promised that I would have more introductions for you tonight, and I'm coming through. I'm going to turn the time over first to our lead mechanic, Spencer Hyes, to introduce an employee who joined us earlier this summer.
By the microphone?
This is Kyle Reimer. He's our new mechanic for the city. I've heard nothing but good things about him over the years. We've been to classes together, trainings, events, and everyone over the years has had good things to say about him, and he's done nothing but show up so far, so if you have anything to say.
So I've been two months now with the city, working with Spencer. It's been a good experience. It's actually exceeded my expectations. He's done a really good job of teaching me the ropes. I've been a mechanic for about 20 years, but this is my first fleet job, and I'm really enjoying it, so thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Kyle.
Spencer, you've been a one-man show in our shop for a while, so we are really glad to have Kyle on board, and he has just been doing great. Last meeting, I was pleased to announce the promotion of Michael Pierce to Support Services Supervisor, and tonight I have another promotion to share, which is also very exciting. This employee has been with the city for 17 years in a variety of positions, most recently as our Water Division Supervisor. And with the reorganization of our Public Works Department, we're very pleased to offer him the position of Assistant Public Works Director, joining in congratulating the promotion of Jake Dyer.
Great news.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
You have anything else?
That's all.
All right. We have four public hearings tonight. We'll start with the one at 415 Hawthorne Avenue. I have a script that I need to read, and let me get started. This is a time set for land use public hearing on an application for an annexation and zone change of property at 415 Hawthorne Avenue. I'll now open the hearing at 7:03. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte context to declare? Seeing none, this hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with a staff report, followed by questions from the council of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant and/or the applicant's representative for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions from them from the city council. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the city council. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. Comments submitted by phone will be taken after in-person comments have been completed. If you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report, or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the hearing, ask the city council to deliberate, and then ask if there is a motion in response to this proposal. Go ahead, and we'll have the staff present their report.
Thank you, Mayor Slacks. So I'll invite our city planner, Chase Blue, to come up. While he does, just a reminder, this information in the packets on page four through page 26, so welcome, Chase.
Hello, counsel. So as mentioned, this is a request for annexation and zone change of a property that's about one acre in size. Request is to change it from the current Polk County zoning suburban residential, which is Polk County's holding zone for lands inside the urban growth boundary, changing it to the city's own residential high density. And so the property is 415 Southeast Hawthorne Avenue. As we can see from the air photo, it's an area that's kind of surrounded on both sides by the city, but has developed to a slightly lesser density. And so we can kind of zoom in there and see that one-acre parcel, which currently has a structure on it. Immediately to the north of that is a vacant lot owned by the city for the future extension of Henkel Street, so some context on the surrounding there. And the city is currently in the process of installing a sewer line down Hawthorne Avenue, which is the street shown there immediately to the east of the subject property. So the zoning for the property currently does not have a city zone, so it's shown in white on the city zoning map because it's outside of city limits. Once brought into the city and rezoned, the proposed zoning is high-density residential, which is consistent with the zoning that is immediately to the west there. The Greenway Mobile Home Park is that land that's immediately to the west, and is zoned high-density residential, so it would be consistent with the adjoining. This area was recently subject to an expansion of the Lockreal Node master plan. Some of you may recall that. Technically, this application was received before that was final and official, and so under the rules of land use procedures, we don't really consider that change as basis for this because it happened after the application was received. But for the purpose of providing context, the master plan for the Lockreal Node does identify the area north of Henkel Street as high-density residential, and the area south of Henkel Street as medium-density residential. So in case that comes up, that was something to be aware of, but not the basis necessarily for approval because it happened after the application was received. As far as the approval criteria for this decision, annexations have six approval criteria. Site has to be within the urban growth boundary. Proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan for the city of Dallas. Site is contiguous to the city limits. Public facilities, that is, the water, the sewer, the streets, have adequate capacity to support development of the site. So that's why I mentioned that sewer line is currently being extended. The area is already served by city water, so there are infrastructures there now to support development of the site. Annexation has to be consistent with the policies and the comprehensive plan regarding annexations, what areas we annex, which areas we don't. And then for master plan nodes, the request needs to include a master plan. Since this was received prior to being included in the master plan node, that last criteria will not apply as an approval criteria in this application. For zone changes, there's five criteria. The request has to be consistent with the statewide planning goals, has to be consistent with the Dallas Comprehensive Plan, same as the previous criterion. Public facilities, again, have to have adequate capacity to support development. The change has to be in the public interest, and the request has to conform to the transportation planning rule under state law. That's looking at, will the change to a higher-density classification result in increased traffic that would adversely impact a transportation facility? And there are certain thresholds and standards as far as how that's calculated. And so the staff report goes into some details, how we don't find that development of the site at a higher density would impact transportation facilities. It would not cause the streets to perform below the acceptable performance standards. So to kind of conclude, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter. After taking testimony and deliberating, they made a motion and voted to recommend to the city council that the annexation and zone change be approved, and so recommending to you tonight that you uphold that recommendation and approve the annexation and zone change. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Counselor Shane.
A question about the zoning. I understand the rules and the fact that this rezoning is not based on the master plan because the master plan wasn't around when the decision, when this came through. All the same, given that most of the properties up and down that street are single-family properties, what was the rationale for choosing high-density versus the alternatives?
So one of the things that we look at when we're selecting which zonings are appropriate is what are the surrounding zonings? And so adjacent to that site, pretty clearly going back to that zoning map, the adjacent zoning is high-density residential, and so that is what's adjacent. In terms of the applicant's development proposal, a higher-density zoning kind of fits better with what they're wanting to do with the property, but I would let the applicant speak in greater detail on that regard.
But there was, this was partly based on what the applicant plans for the property?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, so just the short answer for your question, Counselor Shane, is that the applicant proposed high-density residential, right? So we consider that, and we have to look at what are the state, what are the policies? Does that, you know, comply with, you know, are we able to accept that zoning? So it's, yeah, the zoning, whether it's low, medium, or high, are all implementing zones of the comprehensive plan designation residential, which is what this is.
But the, excuse me, inhale where I'm supposed to swallow. But the initiative for the zoning did come from the applicant.
Right.
Okay. That's all.
Does anyone have any questions for staff? Counselor Briggs.
Where is the transportation study information that you'd referenced in here? Chase, I didn't see it.
So there wasn't a study, per se, given the size of the site, the actual amount of development that could happen, given the maximum zoning allowance on that site, would not generate the number of trips that we would expect to see a traffic impact analysis for. Generally, if a development is going to have fewer than 300 average daily trips, that's kind of our threshold for a traffic impact analysis. And a site of this size being only one acre, even at the high density, would not, would not reach that threshold, so.
So with Hawthorne being a dead-end street and one way out to the highway, and it's a stressed intersection as it is, you're saying that there will be no impact to that that is adverse?
It would not cause it to fall below the acceptable performance standards. So there's a classification for street performance, basically A through F. A being a street that has no other traffic on it, traffic's free-flowing, F being basically total gridlock. And so the standards that the city has calls for basically a level C or better. And so, given the situation that is there at Hawthorne, it's not close to that level, and the addition of the traffic would not cause it to exceed that level. Given the future plans to connect Hawthorne on the south end, to extend Henkel Street across in the coming years, that will even further alleviate whatever impacts may occur, so. Correct, yes. That I don't have in front of me, but it's not below that level of threshold. The way that it's measured at intersections is by seconds of delay, and so you'd be waiting, you know, easily two minutes to be able to make a turn out of there, and so the current traffic just doesn't rise to that level.
Sit there for several minutes at times to get out onto the highway.
I have a question. I don't see it in the packet here, but in the proposed packet that I prepared for, it listed Hawthorne as a major roadway.
That is correct.
And Henkel as a minor. How do you get that designation of a major roadway for a dead-end road?
So the designation is the future condition. So when the transportation system plan is developed, it looks at what will be the classification of the road when it's fully built out, not necessarily what it is today, because there are streets like the extension of Furavilla, which simply don't exist, they're farm fields, but at some point they will be built, and so that's the classification that's assigned to them, is that future condition. As individual properties are developed, they will build their segment of the road to bring it up to that current standard.
I think to add to Chase's answer, that was a good job, Chase. If you look at, if you kind of zoomed out of the map in the area there, right, Henkel is a road that feeds into, you know, Hawthorne or into Lockreal, as an example. Let's use Lockreal, right, because that's all built out. So Henkel feeds into Lockreal, Lockreal feeds into Ellendale. Henkel is a minor street, minor collector. Lockreal, is Lockreal an arterial or a major collector?
Lockreal's a major collector.
So Lockreal is a major collector, similar to what Hawthorne would be, right? So this intersection would be similar, if it's all built out, to what Hawthorne or Henkel and Lockreal is today as it's built out, right? Like Henkel collects traffic from the neighborhoods. That traffic dumps on to Lockreal, a higher-classification street. That traffic dumps on to either Miller or Ellendale, which are arterials, so it's again a higher-classification of street.
So that I understand, the proposed build-out is that Henkel Street will go through to Hawthorne, and that would be making Hawthorne?
Correct.
Because we, I asked you before if we were going to connect Hawthorne to the south, and you said no, that that was a dead-end that was going to stay.
So that's not, that's not happening today or right now. In the future, with the transportation system plan, it does have Henkel connecting, or Hawthorne connecting to the south, up to Ellendale, Henkel connecting both east and west to each other at Hawthorne. So all built out, Hawthorne is going to collect traffic from the south and from the east and west onto Hawthorne up to Ellendale. So that's what the TSP calls for. We're evaluating and updating our TSP right now, so whether or not Hawthorne continues to have that classification in the future is a little bit of an unknown. That's being evaluated by the Oregon Department of Transportation and the city. But in our current plan that we have on the books today, that's what the system is designed to be.
We have to acquire some property to make that southern connection, wouldn't we not?
Right. Yeah, the southern connection as well as the connection on the east. So we only own the land that connects from Hawthorne to the west.
Counselor Briggs.
So if I heard you correctly, Hawthorne is designed to be the same kind of designation that Lockreal is.
Right.
And how wide is Hawthorne right now? And how wide is Lockreal right now?
What's the, so let's talk about the right-of-way width, Chase. Do you know the right-of-way widths of those two roads?
So the right-of-way width of Hawthorne is currently 60 feet. The right-of-way of Lockreal, that I don't know off the top of my head. It's either 60 or 80, and I don't have that information in front of me.
It's different than what the pavement is right now.
Correct, correct.
Correct, yes.
So the future of Hawthorne to be built as a city street, because it's not a city street today, it's a county road, it was built as a county road, it would be widened. There would be curbs, gutters, and sidewalks installed, as well as a future improvement. But again, that's years down the road. Doesn't have anything to do with this particular application tonight. What you're really looking at is the annexation of the land of the one acre and the rezoning of that. So, but you're asking great questions for what the future of this area could look like, what it's planned to look like, and the TSP and other stuff like that, so. But the additional right-of-way, the standard right-of-way width for a major collector street is?
74 feet is my recollection.
74 feet. So you're looking at an additional 14 feet of right-of-way that would need to be acquired, likely being seven feet from each side of the right-of-way as it sits today.
Typically, that additional.
In order to build out all those improvements.
Typically, that additional right-of-way is acquired as individual properties are developed. So when they build the sidewalks in front of their property, they'll dedicate an additional seven feet to accommodate for that.
Counselor Shane.
Yeah, since we're talking about the future anyway, I'd like to piggyback on Larry's question about traffic volume a little bit. You explained what the situation is now, and I think we're clear about that. But if all the properties on Hawthorne north of Henkel are likely to become high-density, which I think is what I heard you say, that would be.
Logical, yes.
Based on the plan, the new plan. As each one of those gets built up, it's going to increase the traffic flow, so we can have, have to have that conversation each time somebody comes in to and asks for, you know, to develop one of those properties, and I assume the answer to that's going to be yes. At what point, where is the tipping point on that? Do we have to have five, 10, 12 of those develop before the classification of the road is forced to change because of increased volume? Where is that?
That's a good question, and I don't have the exact, you know, rate of build-out on that. That's something we'll have to look at as additional properties come in. Certainly, as you add some additional development, that will increase, you know, traffic impact. This is why developments pay system development charges, pay the development fees specifically for traffic improvements, is to be able to make those kinds of investments as the need arises. This is why, for example, the adjacent Barbary Development has been paying fees to pay for the traffic signal at Furavilla that we'll be looking to build in the next few years, so.
And to add to Chase's question, or answer, it was a good answer, Chase, the city doesn't have a crystal ball that, you know, when and how fast these properties, you know, could potentially annex into the city, or, you know, when Henkel, you know, could be connected or when Hawthorne could be connected to the south. So a lot of those things would also influence and factor into what the traffic patterns will look like over time.
It'll change, it'll change the flow, and now we're seeing ways.
But as properties come in and as there's additional traffic, even as, you know, Ellendale perhaps comes, becomes busier, right? That's going to affect the intersection at Hawthorne and Ellendale. And so, you know, each application is evaluated on, does the traffic generated from that proposal, are we sending traffic to a failing intersection? Or is the traffic that's generated by, you know, that potential proposal, is that going to, you know, tip the scale from maybe a non-failing intersection to a failing intersection? That's what the transportation planning rule is really looking at. Are you sending traffic to an intersection that's going to cause it to fail? Right now, that intersection's not failing, according to ODOT standards, and so regardless of how long we've had to sit there, it is, it is an awkward intersection because you have some bends in the road that are right there. It's fairly not the safest intersection to turn on to and off of. That being said, it's not a failing intersection today. The addition of traffic from this proposed zoning isn't going to kick that into a failing status. So that's why a traffic study wasn't required. 300 is a threshold that's oftentimes used for individual sites, but also we need to evaluate, you know, does the traffic generate from the proposal, whether it's, you know, 15 trips, or 350 trips, or 500 trips? Does the number of trips going to that intersection cause it to become a failing intersection? If it does, then the transportation system planning rule, or the transportation planning rule has to be addressed.
So, and of course, if any of those future connections are made, that'll change the flow also. So bottom line is, we're going to be having this conversation again and again.
But you really have to evaluate it on a case-by-case basis as properties come in.
Other than, I would like to ask, where's the data that says it's not failing now?
Chase, I'm assuming that we had a conversation with ODOT regarding this?
Yeah, so Public Works is who I spoke with, and so I don't know exactly where their data came from, but.
Have a document from them that says it's not failing now?
Not, no. I don't have a document in my records that says that. My understanding is that the city's Public Works Department has some data source that they pulled from when they told me that, but I don't have that necessarily in writing from the Public Works Department.
Counselor Blaser, you had a question?
So my question about the high-density is just because I don't understand high and low sometimes is exactly what that means, but if we're talking in terms of high-density for this one acre, are we talking 100 apartments? Do we have a sense of what they're looking at as far as what they're going to build there?
No. So high-density, so there's basically two ways that the zones for residential differ from one another. There's the allowed kinds of development, and then the density of dwelling units that's allowed. So the low-density is primarily a one- and two-family dwelling, so single-family homes, duplexes. The medium and high-density would also allow townhouses, triplexes, fourplexes, apartments. So they have a more flexible use, flexible types of structures that are allowed. As far as dwellings per acre, the low-density is four to seven dwellings per acre. The medium-density is six to 16 dwellings per acre, and then the high-density is 10 to 40 dwellings per acre. Sort of the asterisk that I'll give to that is that when we're looking at multifamily, we do calculate that fractionally based on the number of bedrooms. So there is a little bit of a bonus for, you know, one-bedroom and two-bedroom versus three-bedroom and larger, because really what causes the impacts to infrastructure, to traffic, it's the number of people, and you have fewer people when you have fewer bedrooms. So there is a little bit of a bonus for the smaller bedroom units. But that's kind of the threshold for the high-density is 10 to 40 dwellings per acre.
Potentially 20 to 80 cars if we have two cars per family, okay.
The Institute for Transportation Engineers, they have a sort of a standard survey that they do kind of nationwide to figure out what is the average number of trips that given land uses would generate, everything from shopping centers down to single-family homes, international airports, what have you. And so for a single-family home, they've calculated that, you know, you'll have nine and a half trips on average per day per single-family home, one of which will be during the peak hour. Multifamily, you actually get a smaller number of trips on average because they tend to be smaller household sizes in multifamily than in single-family, so, yeah.
Counselor Shane.
Yeah, and it's worth pointing out that, as Brian very well explained, there are a lot of variables here, you know. When, if, when a developer actually comes in with a proposal to build something on that piece of land, then we'll have actual numbers to look at. Is he proposing 10 units, 20 units? You know, and then we can figure how many people and how many cars. But until, until there's a concrete proposal, it's very nebulous. But then when you've got actual numbers, then we can have that kind, that specific conversation about what the impact is going to be and whether it's, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's a valid concern.
Counselor Briggs.
I understand that with the new master plan zoning, it doesn't apply to this application that was in early, but the question I have would be under policy 3.1.8. Outside of the mixed-use node, high-density residential zoning shall be limited to the area immediately adjacent to the central business district and to the general and neighborhood commercial zones. It feels like we're allowing high-density where it really shouldn't be.
Again, to the extent that it's immediately adjacent to an existing high-density area, I guess that kind of comes into the question of what does adjacent mean? If it's only the properties that directly abut, you know, the central business district, for example, that's, you know, one layer of properties and then nothing. When you actually look at the zoning map, it usually extends, you know, a block, two blocks, three blocks, sometimes farther in a buffer around that. So as a contiguous zone, it meets that standard on a property by property. standard on a property-by-properity basis, maybe not. And so the, the language of the development, or of the comprehensive plan in this case, isn't entirely clear as to how that's measured. And so that does give the city council, I think, then some discretion to say this falls within what we intended when we had those policies adopted, versus saying that, no, that's beyond what we were expecting. But it doesn't really say how that's measured. So.
Chase is saying, just on a practical matter, looking at the map that's up on the screen right now. So, understanding that this application is not subject to the master plan areas, because it was submitted just before the master plan was adopted. We know in the master plan, every property to the north of Henkel on Hawthorne, under the master plan, would be coming into the city as high-density zoning. Underneath the words "proposed zoning" is neighborhood commercial zoning. It's the pink area. The land surrounding that is all high-density zoning. All of the properties in the future, to the left of that brown area, are also going to be high-density residential. And then this property would be immediately abutting those properties. So in, in the future, when every property is part of the city, and they all have the zoning consistent with the master plan, staff could make the argument that, that this property, albeit it's coming in first, would be part and parcel of the larger zone, that there's not like a separation of, of zones between this property and all the other high-density property that's immediately adjacent to that neighborhood commercial zone. So that's, that's one way of looking at it. A stricter interpretation is, this property today, as it sits outside the node areas, is not immediately adjacent to neighborhood commercial, central business district, or general commercial zoning, because it's immediately adjacent to land that's outside the city and high-density residential zoning. So again, as Chase mentioned, there's some discretion on your part, you know, of how you can look at that. And I think you could justify a decision for high-density zoning one way, and not high-density zoning another way. That's, it's really a policy decision for the council.
Questions of the council for staff?
Just to clarify, so it's policy that the city council is setting, as far as where the high-density line is, due to the interpretation of one side or the other side of the point that was brought up by Counselor Briggs?
I think that you can make a decision. I don't think that you're setting a precedent, right? I think you're saying-
But Paul, I mean, it's a policy decision.
It, this is a policy decision. It is, do we feel that, that knowing what the future of this area holds, and this property that's proposed for high-density zoning is, is abutting future high-density residential zoned land that is immediately adjacent to neighborhood commercial zoning? You can look at it that way and apply this, this standard in 3.1.8 and say that it's met. I think you could straightface that past the Luba test. On the other side, you could say, we're not considering the master plan, because the master plan did, did not exist at the time of this application. And so a strict interpretation of the policy is, it needs to be immediately adjacent to, and it is not immediately adjacent to those lands. And so high-density would not make sense. And you could apply a different zoning, like medium-density.
But, but we could apply a different zoning than what is being asked for?
Yes. Yes, as a council, you have the decision-making authority on what zone applies. Now, it needs to be consistent with a comprehensive plan, which is residential, so it can't be, you know, commercial, or parks and open space. It has to be a residential zone. There are applicants proposing high-density. Another zone that might make sense, just based on the mapping, is you look, you know, to the east, you have medium-density residential at the same plane, north to south, as this property. So medium-density, I think, is the next zone that staff would recommend, if not high-density. And the plan and commission, you know, again, the planning commission recommended the applicant's proposal, which was high-density. So if not high-density, staff would recommend medium-density. Chase, correct me if I'm going off course to what you would recommend. And then if not medium-density, the only other zone option you have is low-density. But again, if you put low-density here, you have to think about what the future holds for this area. This is the only application on Hawthorne that you're going to receive that was not subject to the master plan. The master plan has now been adopted. So if you apply your master plan as it sits today, every property south of Henkel would be medium-density residential that's in the county. So it would be odd to have this property, if you applied low-density, surrounded by future medium-density and high-density zoning. That's spot zoning, we don't like doing that. So again, that kind of leads, lends yourself to say, this is on the fringe, it's on the border of the high-density, low, high, high-density, medium-density in the master plan. So one of those two zones is probably the one that makes sense.
I would also-
Based on the numbers and areas provided, just layman term-wise, high-density looking more in apartment complex, medium-density, you're looking at subdividing into separate housing units.
You've got apartments in medium-density that's in allowed use. It's just, it's the number of units that are allowed. So medium and high-density have very similar use types. You know, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, apartment buildings. It's the number of units is the differentiation, right? In, in medium-density, it's eight to sixteen, Chase?
Six to sixteen.
Six to sixteen, so six to sixteen.
Ten to forty.
High-density, ten to forty.
You know, this is almost a grandfather situation, because you've got that large high-density area to the west, and in effect, we're simply extending it one little piece. So, yeah, I, I think there's, there's wiggle room for judgment here.
And I, I would chime in as well, that obviously, we're not including consideration of the master plan as an approval criteria. But the master plan in general is a, is a broad brush stroke. There's wiggle room within the master planning process as that's developed to adjust those boundary lines. So if this property was a hundred feet further north, what would the appropriate zoning be? Does a hundred feet make a difference in the grand scheme of things? So there is that wiggle room in the master planning process. Master plan isn't relevant to the final decision made here today, but as additional context, something to be aware of.
Counselor Schilling?
It probably isn't part of this decision, it's probably when the project comes in. But would this property be subject to, if, since it's forcing it towards a signalization of the Ellendale intersection, would a proportionate share being, being collected on that piece of property? More than likely?
Um, so we don't have any existing provisions for doing that in this area. That's certainly something that the, that may be worthwhile for the city to explore as we do our TSP update, to figure out if that's something that's appropriate for the, the new master plan node. But not having existing documents in place for this area, not having, you know, what is the cost of that going to be? Like, it'd be hard to impose a number and have something to back it up with at this junction. Once we've done the TSP update, I think that potentially opens the door to having a proportionate fee in this area. I think it's just premature at this time. But that's, that's certainly a good question.
And that would be something that would be subject at a development application phase, not the annexation and zone change.
Yes, yes.
So I mean, there's, there's a little bit of time, and we are in the transportation system plan update process. And so, you know, we're not far from having, you know, identified what the improvements, you know, in this area would be, and then having, as Chase said, you know, a fee structure put in place to be able to provide for those improvements.
Yes. And I understand the frustration with understanding what a failing letter grade is with ODOT standards. But being on council and listening to the Favilla intersection discussion, ODOT doesn't consider a left-hand turn in their decision whether a road is operating. It is only a right-hand turn. So that intersection is probably operating, I would guess, at a B. I doubt at a C. So it's very frustrating when, as a city, we try and signalize something, and we're, our hands are tied with the, the ODOT's rules as far as how they interpret failing.
To concern of mine, we, you know, one of our main jobs is to keep our citizens safe. And, you know, we've been fighting ODOT on Favilla for years, have had a death or two there, at least one. So, yeah, their, their criteria doesn't hold much with that. I guess the thing I'm, you know, we, we work hard at trying to keep historic preservation when we look at, you know, recently looking at the mill site, and all the homes around the mill. We want to make sure we're not going to do anything zoning-wise that hurts those houses, or changes the, the flavor of the neighborhood by, you know, by the new construction and by bringing in commercial businesses. The same is here. There may not be, you know, historic homes, but it's a historic, in my mind, it's a historic green space. And as our city kind of collapses in on this little area, we're forcing all these people out of, you know, what they, you know, what, what they've worked hard for their whole life. So, and I realize that, you know, we have to look at this face-up, as the application is. But, I mean, I, I have a hard time with the traffic. I have a hard time with, with everything on this. I'm just leaving it at that.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we're going to move on to hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here tonight? Yes, sir. You have, just a reminder, you have fifteen minutes to present. Please state your name and address for the record, and come up and present to us.
Hey, my name's Brandon Fallman. My address is 295 Patterson Street Northwest in Salem, 97304. I won't need fifteen minutes. Okay, lots of questions about what's going to be here, and, you know, the traffic and all that. And I have an idea, but I don't want to be boxed into it, but I'll just explain what I'm thinking about right now. That's a cottage cluster. So it'd be little, small detached homes, roughly seven or eight hundred square feet, arranged around a common courtyard. There'd be shared parking facilities. When I look at this particular property, Chase had mentioned something at the Planning Commission meeting about getting the most bang for your buck. And for this particular site, being at the intersection, it's going to share quite a big cost with the onsite improvements that are needed, right along the northern border, southern border of Henkel, but northern border of the subject property. So we're going to be punching this street through in theory, which would alleviate a lot of the pressure there on Hawthorne at, at the time of, of the development. And when we talk about, you know, a fair share for a signalized intersection on Favilla, I doubt everybody on Hawthorne's going to be contributing to that intersection when it gets punched through. So that'd be something to consider. Something else with it is, high-density zoning, being that those are right now classified in the TSP, minor and major collectors, it's also at the intersection there. For me, a streetscape looks good when you have a balance on both sides. But if you want that street to be the dividing line, where you definitely see a change in that style of development, that's, I mean, you guys are city council, you guys are in charge. So I really don't have much else to add. If you guys have questions. Counselor Briggs, you mentioned change in the neighborhood. I mean, there's been a lot of deliberation with, I think there's a housing needs analysis done, and a lot of lead-up in different committees and things, going into Planning Commission and City Council over the last decade, for this particular area. And the zone, I mean, like, the whole node thing, it's going to change. But yeah, obviously, how you guys want it to change, it's up to you. So that's all I have to add. I really don't have anything else unless you have questions.
Counselor Shane?
Yeah, I've got one still on the, on the question of, of density zoning. If we can recall what the map looked like when it was up there, Henkel Street is basically the dividing line. Everything above that's, in the, in the new master plan is, is expected to be high-density, and everything below that is expected to be medium-density. Given that this particular property is right below Henkel, what was your rationale for going with high instead of medium-density?
It gave me better flexibility for a project. So just different, different available housing types. And I know in the housing needs analysis that was done, you know, there's talk a lot about affordable housing. And when you can get more units to, as Chase had put it, get better bang for your buck on a site, in theory, you get lower, lower housing costs for people. So.
Well, it's one property. It's not going to shift the balance noticeably, but I wondered what was going through your head.
Your, sorry. Your project could be your, I guess, your idea could fit into a medium-density plan.
Yeah, possibly. Mm-hmm.
There is, there is, what I'm thinking is, currently, there are, that I know of, five developments that haven't even started construction, that are set to go in town. A lot more planned. And so trying to balance for the entire community. I often hear from community members how much they appreciate the small-town feel, and sometimes dragging feet to, to stay away from, running away from that. So.
If I may, I know that there's a lot of people, and I, I completely get it. I mean, like, residents don't want anything right next to them. They don't want it in their backyard. That's, that's a common thing. The NIMBY thing. And it came up at Planning Commission, and I'm sure there's people here tonight that aren't interested in this. And I, I completely understand, completely understand. And I've, I've, I mentioned at last meeting, and the same one, I'd like to just reiterate, I have my contact information available. Anyone is welcome to give me a call or an email, and I'll meet with them. And whatever you have to say, it doesn't mean that I'll change something, but I might. I will consider what you have to say. And I, I completely understand the "not in my backyard," but it's going to be in, there's stuff that will happen, and it's going to be in somebody's backyard. And I guess, sometimes, you know, it's, 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 it's who draws the shortest straw, I guess. I, I don't really know else to put it. But.
I just want to echo Counselor Holsappel's point in that the housing needs analysis has drastically changed since it came out. We've probably got another four or five hundred units on the books right now, coming up out of the ground. So I think that's going to be dramatically different. And I guess the other question I would have is, you're, you, you live in another town, you're going to have this managed by a management company or manage it yourself. And, you know, I just would provide caution. We have a lot of properties in town where the landlords are absent, and, and things are, look, things look bad fast.
Sure.
So if this happens to go through, I hope it doesn't happen.
No. I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your sentiment on that. And I, I would not plan to have a management company manage this. It would be myself. And I'm happy to take you by anything that I manage right now. And, but I, and I, I completely understand where you're coming from. And I don't know how to mitigate that for you. Some, some of us have already made up our minds before this meeting started. And, and that's fine. That's fine. It's your guys' town, and how you want to see it, it's your decision.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Well, now I'll move on to public testimony. I'll have you guys raise your hand, people who want to testify, and I'll call you up one at a time. Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to testify, and we'll alert you when you have thirty seconds remaining. At the five-minute mark, your testimony will end. As a reminder, if you'll be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report, or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. So, is anybody who would like to testify tonight? Okay, go ahead and come up to the microphone, please, and just state your name.
I'm Thomas.
All right, Mr.-
I'm five southeast Hawthorne.
Perfect. So Mr. Mathis, as you go, I'm going to put a little timer up here. When the green light comes on, it means you've used three minutes. The yellow light's four, and then the red light's five minutes, okay?
It won't be that long.
Perfect.
Question. When Marty and Nancy loses their house, Henkel goes all the way through. That's going to create another corner lot identical to this one. What are you going to do then, when they want to go high-density? I mean, you going to deny it? Because I know you said they can't set a precedent, but you are. I mean, I've been in construction my whole life, and I know builders, some, with a lot of money, and a lot of lawyers, can sue cities, put things under so much pressure that the cities will give in because they don't want the lawsuits. Three rivers over Lake Billy Shinook, we just went through that. Years of lawsuits. We finally had to give in because we can't afford it. The builder out of California, just like doubled our size, so he could have access to the water. Money does a lot of things. Again, President, high-density. Why are you doing this? Because you need the low-income housing? Because the state's going to give you money back? Does the city need more low-income housing? I assume it does. Are you- I assume it does. Or you wouldn't be changing our street to what you're doing. Why not make it all low density? Because if you put high density and medium density, what are we looking at? 900 more units? Where there used to be, what, 29 now? I mean, that has an impact. I don't care how you look at it. That's a lot of houses, a lot of families and a lot of cars. I mean, average, what, two per household? I mean, our street is just a street. My concern is like everybody else is. Is it necessary? And what if somebody does develop it to the max? I mean, there's no way of fixing that. And on behalf of everyone I know on Hawthorne, it would really be beneficial if the project manager could give us a schedule. I mean, our street is tore up. Everybody thinks something different. We don't know who can connect to the sewer, what it's going to cost, when it's going to happen. Sidewalks, everything is up in the air. Is our street going to get repaved? I mean, we got, it's really bad now, but they're done putting the sewer in our street. So if you're not going to put sidewalks in, can you patch the street so we don't live in a dust bowl? I mean, it's just common sense to me, you know, and if you break it, fix it. That's all.
Before you leave, I'll just talk real fast about the last part of your comments. And that's the, the street work for the sewer project that's going through there. So yeah, the city does have a plan to go back through and take care of the street. There's additional paving that takes place with that project, like on the patch that we're going to have to do on Ellendale. So we want to do all the paving at the same time. There's just efficiencies there.
We will get patched before sidewalks.
Yes, the street, the street with the completion of this project will be completely repaired. In fact, I think the plan and our public rest director is back there is to pave the entirety of that street, north to south, east to west. So that street's going to be paved.
Workers going on, so you must have a project manager and a schedule.
We do, yeah. So our public rest director, Jennifer Ward, is a great person to talk to. And so she's here and you can get some of that information from her.
Everybody be on the same page would really be helpful.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Does anyone else want to speak tonight? Yes, sir. Come up and give us your name and your address. And you have five minutes.
My name is Marty Brings. I live on Henkel. 390 Southeast Hawthorne. And first, I want to just thank you, Mike. I very much appreciate that. I really didn't plan to speak this time. I spoke before and I don't know anything new to say. I appreciate Mr. Briggs, some of your comments on just your caution and that in our neighborhood. I, there's a lot of people that walk up and down that street that has no sidewalks, but they just walk up and down this country road, if you will. And they have for decades. And you're changing that. And it's going to change how our street is used in a lot of ways. When you talk about increasing the right of way and going seven feet both sides of the existing right of way, you got to realize that like my house that isn't going to be there for how much longer, I don't know. But if you increased that seven feet, I can't park my car in front of the garage without the back end of it being in, on the sidewalk. And I, I just, I just don't know. Yeah, the whole idea of going into, I mean, right into this first one, I know all the plan and everything wasn't approved yet, but going right high density is just, it just, it just doesn't feel very courteous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to testify on this issue tonight? Yes, come up here, please. Just a reminder, you just state your name and your address and you have five minutes.
Shelby and Michael Coots. We live at 375 Southeast Hawthorne. We're right above where Henkel will be. So two lots above the proposed address. I guess, I feel like it just got kind of skipped over tonight, but at the planning meeting, they talked a little bit more. One of the members, are the counselors at the planning meeting too, or one of the members kind of brought up or questioned that one of the approval criteria was that it has to be in the public's best interest for the neighborhood and the neighborhood's best interest. And that, I feel like it was just worded differently on the approval tonight. And I'm just wondering how that, or when that, when is that going to be addressed? How do we know if it's, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of neighbors who have come to meetings over the last few years, I think, when the whole Ocarrel note was trying to get approved. And it just, it's not in our best interest. I'm having a hard time understanding how that is decided, I guess.
It seems quite apparent.
I'll ask questions.
Based on everybody that we've talked to and everybody that's been here and spoke that live on the street, I guess is kind of where we're coming from.
Yeah, it's just, it's pushing people out who've lived there for 30 years. So I just don't understand how it's in the best entrance, interest. And the high density that's mentioned on the map is a manufactured home park, which is single level homes. I mean, an apartment building can be three stories. And if he, I like the cottage concept. I do like that. I think that would be cute. But if he decides, you know, changes his mind, plans change and sells it to another investor, they could do apartments. I mean, if it's approved high density, they, anything can happen. Yeah. It's been touched on a little bit, but I mean, even medium density helps us feel a little more secure, less intruded. Just the lack of privacy and, what else was I saying? Oh, I do have a question. It was mentioned a few times that all of the future lots above Henkel will be high density. But is that required? So like if we were to annex into the city, would we be required to go to high density? Like if our septic failed and we had to get on sewer, would we be high density? Because I mean, we don't have any plans of going to high density soon. So that little point, I guess, didn't really make sense to me because I don't know anybody on the street who wants, who currently lives there who wants to change to high density. I don't know. I think, would we have to change to high density?
Do you have an answer to that?
So all I would just address is that the master plan that's been approved, right, includes high density residential as shown, everything north of Henkel. If your property's north of Henkel, the presumption would be that upon annexation, the zoning that would be applied would be high density. As our city planner, Chase Blue, talked about, there's provisions in master planning on, with master plans, those lines aren't definitive, right? You're a property or two to the north, perhaps, you know, medium density residential is what makes sense there as opposed to high density residential. So it's not locked in stone that, you know, thou shalt be high density when you annex. But the master plan that was adopted shows that area, you know, being, you know, generally that zoning. So it's not, it's not like concrete, you know, it will be, but that's what's shown.
Like it's assumed that all of those homes and properties are going to be high density when, I mean, I don't think they will be, but.
That is the planning presumption.
And then we talked a little bit, or you guys talked a little bit about the public facilities. That, does that include like drainage? Is that a public facility?
So drainage would be considered at the time of development, yes.
There's, I'm sure most of our neighbors can attest that there's a horrible drainage issue on the street. And then when we were at the planning meeting, it seemed like everyone wasn't aware of it. So I just, I don't know, I think it's going to be at a lot of drainage issues to have that many more roofs or, you know.
You know, with the additional impervious surfaces that are being created, whether it's roofs or drive surfaces, paving, you know, how's that being captured and how's it being conveyed offsite? The law is that you cannot increase the, you cannot accept more water than you were historically accepting. Oregon has it backwards to every other state. Generally, it's you don't give more water onto someone's property. But the law in Oregon is you, a property cannot receive more than it historically received. So if a development creates additional stormwater onto your property, you have a claim against that person who's conveying more water. So we make sure that that doesn't happen through the engineering work that takes place with the development application.
Is the city responsible for that?
Or that landowner would be responsible.
The city is responsible to ensure that the developer builds a system that does not add additional stormwater beyond the historical flows that have already been going on your property. So.
Added to that since it's in the county? I mean, it just sounded like it's a county street, so the city wasn't aware of that. So how is the current issue?
So there are.
Going to be, it's going to land on the developer?
There are engineering calculations that are in standards. So we know, you know, a roof of certain size accommodates, you know, would collect so much stormwater. We ensure that the catchment that they propose is able to hold that much stormwater and convey it at the same release that the historical flows would do with just a bare ground lot, for example.
When does the city jump in to maintain the street and just like a house here and there becoming city? Is the county supposed to?
Are we talking, are we talking Hawthorne or are we?
Hawthorne, yeah, yeah, sorry.
So the city entered into.
It's a current issue.
Yeah, the city entered into an intergovernmental agreement for the maintenance of Hawthorne right now. So the city is now responsible for the maintenance of Hawthorne. We're also responsible to pave Hawthorne within the first seven years of that agreement. Ultimately, that agreement is for the city to annex Hawthorne, the street itself, which we're proposing, which we will propose to do probably within the next year to two years. So our plan is to.
Sidewalks?
No, it's just to annex the road as it sits today. But we also intend on paving the street with this project that we're doing right now, which kind of checks the box of that requirement within that agreement. So the city is going to be responsible for the maintenance of Hawthorne, you know, as it sits today, as it's going to be improved with the paving that we're going to put in with the sewer project that's happening right now. And whatever. The city's, the city's responsible today, yes.
We have two sump pumps going like every 45 seconds, like eight months out of the year. And I know some neighbors have to drive through like lakes to get into their house. And just would hate for that to fall on the developer. Yeah. That's pretty much it, I guess. I just, I guess I would just hope that you take into consideration the neighbors and, I don't know, I mean, what, what was high density? Was it 16 and above?
10 to 40. Medium density is 6 to 16.
In my eyes, medium density would suffice having the cottage cluster. That is the plan. So it's just, it's just scary when you guys keep saying, oh, it's not getting, we're not determining that right now. We're going to determine it at the next meeting, at the next meeting. It's like, we have to like constantly be on guard to try to catch the next meeting. It's just scary. Not knowing how that works.
So if this was annexed and it's in the, in the city and a development proposal was given, there was public notice requirements that's required by state law. So you would get notified in writing, you know, property owners within so many feet of the development proposal would get notified. And your neighborhood seems to be connected, which is awesome. We love it. You guys would talk to each other and make sure you're in attendance at that meeting.
But when is all this going to get determined at the next meeting? Like?
Anything, anything development related. So, so tonight is just annexing the property and applying a zone. So development, what development looks like, stormwater, traffic, you know, flows, you know, all that is really teased out with an actual development application. That's the next meeting, right? That's the next application process. Sometimes there's a meeting like this and sometimes there's not. It just depends, right? There's state laws that dictate.
At that meeting, if it was high density, if that got approved, could you limit him to 10 structures or dwelling units?
Or whatever the density allows, right? And whatever is proposed.
You're saying that we, it's going to be decided at the next meeting?
So that's why it's important to know, you're considering, you can consider density today, right? So your densities for medium density are 6 to 16 units. So that would be the max. High density is 10 to 40. So if it's a high density lot, and that's what's being considered tonight, whether it's a high density lot, a medium density lot, a low density lot, annexed, not annexed. But if it's annexed and it's high density, because that's the scenario you put together, whatever the future development proposal is, has to be within that density range. Minimum of 10 units, maximum of 40. It's not automatically approved. The density amount is, has to be within that range. So it could be 10 units, it could be 40 units. Now, if it's 40 units, they have to meet every other requirement, right? Stormwater, setbacks, height requirements, parking. There's a lot of other standards that come into play. All those have to be met. It gets really challenging to develop a site at high density, especially when you're at the minimum lot size, right? One acre lot, that's what this is. One acre is 40. If you try to put 40 units on there, they'd have to get really creative to do that. It would be really creative to get there. Doesn't sound like that's what the developer wants to do. At least that's what he's saying today. Doesn't mean he can't change his mind. So, yeah, but I think that, you know, it's really challenging to build something at the max density. Really creative, usually some small, small units in order to get to that density, you know, things of that nature. So, but all the, all the development impacts, development considerations are the next application. That's not tonight. Tonight is, what is the. Right, all right. What is the density that the zoning allows? So it's medium, high, low and annexed or not annexed. That's what we're considering tonight.
And what about that, the developmental code?
So the criteria, so there is a criteria. It's in the development code section 4.7030B4. It's the second to last criteria for a zone change that says, "The change is in the public interest with regard to neighborhood or community conditions, or correct some mistake or inconsistency in the comprehensive plan map or zoning map regarding the property, which is the subject of the application." I'm assuming that's the criteria that maybe the planning commissioner brought up. Yeah. So that is a criteria that was, that's a criteria that was considered. Staff put a finding in the report. That's on page 12 for the counselors. So the council's considering that criteria in their decision making tonight. Yep.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your testimony. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else want to speak tonight on this issue? Do we have anyone on the phone? Okay. Yeah, does the applicant have anything else they'd like to say after hearing the testimony from the public? You have time for rebuttal if you want.
The only thing I'd like to add is please reach out to me if you'd like to. Honestly, I know it maybe sounds scary or weird to like talk to me about it, but I will talk to you openly about it and I will consider what you have to say. Yeah, sure.
Right. Let's see. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about the matter for the staff before we close the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at 8:06. Is there a motion by the city council? Do we have a prepared motion?
So there's a recommended motion and it's on page five of the staff report. You can discuss it before you make a motion or you can make a motion then discuss.
Question about the motion. Are we locked into the recommended motion or can we make edits to the motion?
You can move whatever you'd like to do.
I'd like to deliberate a little before we, before we formalize it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, 30,000 foot view, development's going to happen whether we want it to or not. We're under, all, all cities are under intense pressure from the state to build more housing. We needn't go into the nuts and bolts. We all know them. And as nice as it would be to adopt a no growth policy, we're not allowed to do that under state law either. So development's going to happen. I would, I would just feel a lot better about this, given the location of the property, if it was medium instead of high.
I tend to agree with Counselor Sheen. I, I know that neighborhood. I served, served it for 25 years in the sheriff's office. I have major problems with it being called a major roadway. I understand why, but no. And I, I understand the requirement in development for more housing than the state, but I also know that we have five properties that are set to go that construction hasn't even started. That's going to bring hundreds of units into the city. So is the need as great as it's being stated right now? I don't think so, because if it was, there'd be construction started on those now. So I'm, I lean more towards mediums, specifically hearing from the developer of his plan of what he's got there and it's doable within a medium and also. And also looking where it's at in the future plan, south of the ankle street intersection. That would make more sense in that area than high, than high density.
Carlos?
Yes, I agree with the medium density. I appreciate the testimony of people that live along the street there on Hawthorne. They're the ones that have been there for a while. But also, what you're not hearing from, or who you're not hearing from are even more elderly people that have nowhere else to move to. They're not, they've been in their homes for many, many years. I know a lot of neighbors or constituents that live on that street, they have mobility problems. This would present, the high density would present a risk of their mobility. They like to walk along Hawthorne. It's something that they do for their enjoyment and for their quality of life. And I think a lot of people, elderly folks, the quality of life will be, will be, I think they would be ruined, you know, if we're looking at a high density. I would recommend a median density.
Sir Schilling?
Just want to bring counsel back to the criteria that we have before us. And if you're wanting to look at moving it to RM instead of RH, the policy that you're talking about is policy 3.1.1. Each residential neighborhood shall be located within 1.5 miles of the central business district or land that is zoned or planned for general commercial or neighborhood commercial development. That is the only policy that we can review if you're wanting to change it from RH to RM.
Question of whether it's adjoining that commercial business.
Correct. Which it is not, or is.
Clearly not.
Or is. You've got, you can argue either way. That's your prerogative as counselors in making this policy. I want just to make sure that you're clear on.
It's not 3.1.1, it's 3.1.8. 3.1.8. So 3.1.1 says each residential neighborhood shall be located within one and a half miles of the central business district or land that is zoned or planned for general commercial or neighborhood commercial. And this land is within 1.5 miles of that. So it's not that policy. It's 3.1.8 that says it's immediately adjacent to central business district, general commercial or neighborhood commercial, which this is. A strict interpretation of that is that it's not, this property itself is not.
On this exact topic, and I'm not asking, I'm not trying to nail you down, but given your experience in this area, which I know you have a lot of, do you think changing it here and now from high to medium would pass the Luba test?
I think that, I think that Luba would agree with you, whether, whether you make a finding supporting this as high-density residential or whether you support it as medium-density residential. You have to make the, you have to make the decision. I think there's discretion here.
Also point out, just for context, that as we've, as we've heard, the master plan, which granted doesn't govern this because it was, wasn't in effect at the time the application came in, but the master plan does call for, for medium density at that location. So this would be more consistent with the direction we want to go forward into the future.
Challenging, if, I think Luba challenging, you'd lose if you made that the finding.
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm not suggesting putting that in writing. I'm just saying from, from, yeah, context-wise.
The policy as it's, as it reads that you would rely on, which I think is discretionary policies I described before, is 3.1.8. Outside of the mixed-use node, which this is, because it's not, at the time of application, was not within the mixed-use node. So this policy applies. It says, "High-density residential zoning shall be limited to the area immediately adjacent to the central business district or to the general and neighborhood commercial zones."
So your best judgment is that we do have discretion?
I think you could say, you could straight face, say, "This property, as it sits, does not, is not immediately adjacent to any of those zones," right? The nearest one is the neighborhood commercial, which is several hundred feet to the northeast. And then there's general commercial further to the northwest. I think we, you can make an argument to say, notwithstanding that this property today does not touch that land, all the land that is planned in the future, according to our master plan, would be high-density residential. This piece, as all that land ultimately is built, and, and, not built, but annexed into the city and has a high-density zone, you could connect that piece physically to all the other high-density zoning that does touch neighborhood commercial zone. And you could then say, notwithstanding it doesn't physically touch it today, it will upon annexation of all the adjoining properties. And so this policy can be met. So I think you could slice this, you know, piece of bread either direction. You have discretion, however you want to make that.
Any other comments or questions?
App. So I would say, just to help counsel here, you have two options for your motion. One is as it's written on page five. If you wanted to modify that to medium-density residential, I would change the motion to say, "I move to approve the annexation," because you're not, not doing that, it sounds like, "and zone change, comma, applying a medium-density zone, comma, and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the Dallas zoning map to reflect this action."
That make sense to you?
Would they have to reference the?
The discussion, the discussion tonight regarding 3.1.8 will be included in, if you went with a medium-density residential zoning, staff in their final order would have findings reflecting the discussion to that end.
Sir Schilling?
Just to restate what the developer talked about in his quoting of Chase as a bigger bang for your buck, and I'm sure that his motivation is to put more units, more cottage cluster units in there to help drive the cost down of purchasing the property and the half-street improvement. With saying that, I'm not, not saying I'm in favor of staying with RH. I just want to make sure that you understand what he's trying to do or what he's trying to communicate.
At what point do we address?
It's the master plan outside of this hearing. Is it something we can tee up now or when is that appropriate?
I would say if you wanted to kind of revisit the master plan that you just adopted, it wouldn't be something that you would do right now. You could do that later tonight and say, hey, during, you know, council comment portion in the meeting, you know, bring up any issues you have with that and any direction you want us to take.
I would like to make the motion with the wording change that, that you proposed. Could you restate it again, just so we're all?
Yeah, so if Counselor Shane was to make this motion, I'll read it and he can say so moved. It is, "I move to approve the annexation and zone change and applying a medium-density residential zone and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the Dallas zoning map to reflect this action."
So move.
Move, do I have a second?
Here in the motion of the subject property. Those words are not in the motion. Do you want me to add those words? So I am specifically. I'm talking about that one specific property.
You could say, "I move to approve the annexation and zone change of 415 Hawthorne Avenue, applying a medium residential density zone and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the Dallas zoning map to reflect this action."
Amending his.
No, no, because it hasn't been seconded yet. So I'll just make that my, my actual motion.
So his first, first motion died, second one includes the address.
Any discussion?
Who's seconded?
Second by Counselor Holsapple, moved by Counselor Shane. Sorry, I forgot to do that. Any further discussion? Should we do a roll call vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No vote from Counselor Briggs. Motion passes by majority. Anywhere reflecting the city council decisions tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants are the record within 10 business days. Okay. Are we ready to move on to the next public hearing?
So do we want to take a two-minute break so those that, from Hawthorne that don't want to stay for the rest of the public hearings can get up and go if you want?
Want to stay for the, we have three more public hearings tonight. You're welcome to stay.
Need a break?
We'll recess for five minutes. Okay, we're going to reopen the council meeting at 8:26 and move on to our second public hearing. This is a public hearing on RVs and parks in open space. I now declare the public hearing open at 8:26. This is a public hearing on the proposed Dallas Development Code updates addressing RV parks in the parks and open space zone. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Seeing none. Can we please have the staff report? Chase?
Hello again. So staff report on this one, not terribly lengthy. I don't have a slideshow for you on this one because there's no pretty pictures to look at. But essentially, the, the request from the applicant, this is a change to the Dallas Development Code that's been initiated by a private party, as, as allowed for under the, under the code. We have procedures for that. And so the, the gist of what they are asking for is that we amend the list of allowed uses in our parks and open space zone. It's the green zones on the, on the zoning map. We amend the list of allowed uses to include RV parks in conjunction with a golf course. And so Planning Commission held public hearing on that, took, took testimony. Staff recommended that, that RV parks be allowed in conjunction with golf courses as a conditional use or subject to a conditional use permit. That ultimately was the recommendation that the Planning Commission adopted and voted to, forward to the, the city council recommending that the development code be amended to allow RV parks in conjunction with golf courses as a conditional use or with a conditional use permit. So broader context to this, there is a golf course adjacent to the city that is looking to do an RV park in conjunction with. to forward to the city council recommending that the development code be amended to allow RV parks in conjunction with golf courses and would annex into the city to be able to do so. Our code doesn't currently allow that as a use, and so they have requested that our code be changed. The actual annexation of such golf course is the matter of a separate public hearing. This is looking solely at whether the development code should be amended to allow RV parks in conjunction with a golf course. So, questions for staff?
Specifically in conjunction just with golf courses?
Yes.
It wouldn't be an RV park available at any park or space?
That is the way that it's being proposed currently. Now, city council ultimately kind of gets to decide what development code is, so if that's not the parameters that the city council wants, you do have flexibility to establish other parameters. But that's what's been proposed by the Planning Commission as their recommendation.
Language they're proposing does specifically say golf courses.
Do you have Chase?
That's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions of Chase? Is this next public hearing on the property?
There's no subject property for this. It is a blanket, citywide, anywhere in the parks and open space zone where you have a golf course, you could also do an RV park. So, it applies citywide to any parks and open space zone with a golf course. Now, there's only one of those in town, but in theory.
Okay.
As the town grows, if there was another golf course that was added to the city in the future, and they wanted to have an RV park, they could conditionally permit to add that to their.
Great problem.
Yeah. So, Chase, I just want to, also, RV Operations LLC was the applicant for this code change, correct?
Yes.
So, Mayor, after staff has done, we can invite the applicant to come up and give a presentation on this topic as well.
Okay. All right. Do we want the applicant next?
Should I, I wanted to comment, I just thought of something.
Okay, Larry.
I don't see it on my screen.
I'm assuming golf course is relative to the ball we hit around the course and not, it's a frisbee golf course, right? Is there something we need to address there? Just throwing it out there, it just popped up.
Interesting question.
I will grab the development code and look at the definition section while the applicant speaks on their behalf.
Good catch.
Good evening, my name's Alan Sorum. For the record, my address is 250 Church Street, Southeast Salem, Oregon, attorney for the applicant Dallas Golf Club. So, yeah, we do have a proposal, so we're kind of splitting the presentation tonight in half, so this is, forgive me if I pause or something, I am prepared. It's just hard to like think about what part are we talking about for this hearing and which one is the other. So, just the whole idea of combining RV parks and as a use in conjunction with golf courses. We've got a letter in the record, there's a Malibu Golf Course down in Lebanon, there's another one Grants Pass, and there's about five or six and more growing in Oregon. It's really becoming another part of the industry that's really receptive to this. So, that is, you know, providing this level of flexibility is something that we as the applicant are interested in. You know, right now, we kind of looked at the code and tried to do an evaluation, you know, would we have to do a text amendment? We explored some of the ideas about could you do this as a secondary use or an accessory use? But under the code language, that really did not fit, so we came with a proposal during the Planning Commission. There was a lot of good discussion and questions from people, and at that time, our request changed a little bit, and it was, staff recommended that if you do go forward, it should be as a conditional use, and we're okay with that. So, the big difference being, in addition to doing a site plan review, you're asking kind of the big picture questions on any conditional use application. Is this use, you know, compatible with the neighborhood? And are there any reasonable conditions of approval that need to be offered in order to mitigate any impacts? Which is a nice way of kind of categorizing certain uses of, yes, this is something that we want to see, but we also are understanding that potentially there may need to be some conditions of approval in order to make it a good fit. So, that's something still consistent with our request, you know, open to that, want to be good neighbors, that's been part of the process at all. So, we just want the right to make an application. We don't want to, you know, be in a position where we can't do, bring this use to the city at all. So, that's what the text amendment part is about, and we'll be happy to talk about our property in the next hearing.
Questions? All right. Does anyone for the public wish to speak tonight on this topic? Do we have anyone on the phone? All right, is there any further discussion? Counselor Shane?
Subject to the answer to Larry's question, this sounds like a no-brainer.
Is there a definition of RV park also?
We do have a definition of RV park, yes. It was added with the most recent round of code updates.
Is there a time length?
Yes.
So, state law does not allow us to establish time limits for RV parks. The operator of the park can establish limits, but we as a government entity cannot impose that. Correct, yeah.
It's not a city park, we don't control it.
So, the other question would be then, why add this in with the city park and not have them subdivide it out and make it so commercial use and put the trailer park in, the RV park in the commercial use zone? Why make it part of a park?
So, under our current development code, RV parks are only allowed in the general commercial zone. In order to zone something as general commercial, particularly the site in question, you would need to do a comprehensive plan amendment, which is a much more complicated, convoluted process. So, that could also be another way of approaching it. Ultimately, it comes back to the city council as to deciding whether to approve a comprehensive plan amendment. The challenge with that, of course, is that if you do a comprehensive plan amendment to general commercial, then any commercial use could locate into that zone, including things in RV parks, so.
And on the flip side of that, you're also allowing an RV park in any general commercial zone land in the city, right? So, you can have an RV park, you know, in the, like, Rite Aid, for example, is a building that just went vacant, you know? The property owner could say, hey, I want to put an RV park here now, and just throw an RV park up. So, you have to be kind of conscientious about kind of what you're doing. You could say, hey, we're going to allow golf courses no longer in parks and open space, but golf courses also are permitted in the general commercial zone, and you can only have RV parks with a golf course. So, that's one way to kind of limit it down to the general commercial zone. But then you get in the problem of having to, you know, get land zoned at general commercial, which can somehow, sometimes be complicated with the state because you have to look at your economic opportunities analysis and other factors like that. Parks and open space gives you more flexibility to be able to add, you know, golf courses and add that land, it's less restrictive.
For Shilling?
I just want to make sure, current events and golf courses, there's a lot of golf courses in the middle of cities that are going under and are being vacated. This is an opportunity to hopefully keep this golf course solvent, would be my argument in favor of adding this to our parks and open space.
Breaks.
The question I think is obvious, though, don't we receive a transient lodging tax from RV parks, or is that something that we?
You do.
Okay, so would we also generate revenue to the city?
So, generate revenue through the lodging of RVs.
And so, in answer to the question that was posed previously, our development code does not have a definition of golf course. When no definition is provided, we default to the dictionary definition. So, if the city council wanted to provide additional parameters around that or to amend the development code to have a definition of golf course, certainly that would be something that city council could do.
To hung up on that tonight, I think it's pretty clear what we're intending to do. You know, we're not looking at this golf course or, you know, some other type of, you know, miniature golf course, we're really looking at golf courses.
And it would be a conditional use, is the recommendation, so that does give us a little bit more discretionary measure of review. So, if someone tried to do like a mini putt-putt golf and do an RV park, that would be something that could, you know, potentially be blocked at the conditional use permit level, so.
Counselor Holzapoll, then.
Just, I love golfing there, I think it's a great course, it's a great place to work on your game, I think it's a great idea. The number one concern I'm hearing from the public is that it becomes a permanent resident RV park and deteriorates from the use of the actual golf course itself. That's the biggest concern that I'm getting from the public.
Counselor Shane?
Yeah, just piggybacking on what Brian said a moment ago. The only place you're likely to see a frisbee or other type of golf course is in a park, which is owned by the city and not by a private developers. The likelihood of that happening, while it's a theoretical possibility, I think is, like Brian said, not worth worrying about right now.
Oh, it's a good thought.
Any more questions for staff?
Not a question, an observation. If the golf course were to shut down, then the RV park would have to go away. Is that correct?
If it's a conditional use, then yes.
So, I wouldn't worry too much about it turning into a lifelong adventure over there because we would just stop golfing and they'd go out of business and they'd lose their RV park.
Exactly. That golf course is staying, we love it.
Any other questions?
I second that.
Comments? No further discussion? Any more deliberation? We'll entertain a motion.
Did you close the public hearing?
Oh, I did not close the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing at 8:40. Now, any deliberations before the motion? I'll entertain a motion if someone has one. Go ahead, Counselor Shane.
I'll do it. I move to adopt the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the change and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the Dallas Development Code to reflect this action.
Second it.
By Counselor Shane and seconded by Counselor Blosser. All those in, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Public hearing number three. This is time set for a land use public hearing on the application for an annexation and zone change of property at 11875 Ours Corner Road. I will now open the public hearing at 8:41. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte context to declare? Hearing none. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with a staff report, followed by questions from the council or staff. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant and/or the applicant's representative for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions from them, from the city council, of them, from the city council. Thereafter, we'll hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the city council. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. Comments submitted by phone will be taken after in-person comments have been completed. If you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we've heard all testimony, I'll close the hearing, ask the city council to deliberate, and then ask if there's a motion in response to this proposal. Will the staff please present their report?
Yes, because this one addresses a specific property, I do have pretty pictures for this one. So, as mentioned, this is an annexation and a zone change. The property is 41.85 acres in size, more or less, and the request is to change it to parks and open space zoning. Currently, it's zoned with Polk County's public amusement zone, but bringing into the city would be parks and open space. And so, the location on Ours Corner is the Dallas Golf Club, which, as from the air, we can see is a golf course adjacent to the city. So, the existing zoning for the site on our zoning map is shown in white because it's not inside city limits, so anything that's outside city limits is white on our map. But as mentioned, it is a Polk County public amusement zone. The proposed zoning is parks and open space, as you can see here. This is consistent with the Dallas Comprehensive Plan, which calls for this site to be parks and open space. The site was subject to a UGB expansion back in 2017, where that growth boundary, the red line, was expanded to include the golf course with the Comprehensive Plan designation of parks and open space, so the zoning is consistent with that. Same six approval criteria for annexations has to be inside the growth boundary, contiguous city limits, proposed zoning consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, public facilities have capacity to support. And then, again, the same five approval criteria for the zone change, as we had with the previous application, so the statewide planning goals, Comprehensive Plan being consistent, public facilities, again, have capacity to support, change being in the public interest, and the transportation planning rule compliance, which, since it's a park, has a little bit of a lesser concern on that one. So, the City, the Planning Commission had a public hearing, they took testimony, and their recommendation was to approve the annexation and the zone change. So, yeah, for more specific findings, you have the written staff report in front of you, but that's kind of the quick and the dirty of it. Questions on this one?
Questions of staff? All right. Well, thank you, Chase. We'll now hear from the applicant. As a reminder, you have 15 minutes to present. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Alan Sorum, attorney for the applicant. So, yes, we would ask the city council to approve our proposal for annexation and zone change. No Comprehensive Plan map change is needed, given that the comp plan was amended in 2017 with the UGB request. We have a full TIA traffic planning memo in the record. We have a conceptual plan that included a, is supported by memorandum from Mr. Jim Pax, a civil engineer, demonstrating that the site is fully developable with utilities available. And so, you know, we're ready to go as soon as the city were to approve the annexation. In addition to the text amendment in the prior hearing with the zone change, then we would move forward with a development proposal. So, while we don't have a development proposal before you tonight, we have put in a good amount of work already, making sure that it is quite feasible to move forward with that, and we're anxious to be given the opportunity to start. So, if there's any questions about the application materials, I'm happy to try to answer your questions. Oh, I would like to clarify one thing. The code, you know, does talk recreational vehicles, you know, it says the characteristics are a common, are a commercial use primarily designed to accommodate recreational vehicles for overnight stays as a form of transportation, or, excuse me, as a form of transient lodging by providing spaces and supporting facilities for RVs, and continues on. There's no proposal to, you know, nor desire to turn it into a permanent manufactured home park. I could understand why that is a concern, so we'll be sure when we come in with a development proposal to suggest some potential conditions of approval that could potentially put people at ease. With that, we as, you know, the property owners have the ability to, you know, set the rules for what we want in the best interest of the course and are happy to be transparent and offer up some reasonable conditions of approval, so that could happen. We just can't do that tonight as part of a zone change request, but we hear the public comments on that, that's well taken, and appreciate you sharing those comments.
Questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public testimony is now allowed. Does anyone want to testify on this issue before us right now? Do we have anyone on the phone? Having none. Let's see here.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah, we'll go ahead. We, you have any more questions for staff? Anybody? Okay, go ahead, Larry.
We don't have any other parks in the area that allow camping, right?
In the area, do you mean inside city limits or in the greater Polk County?
City limits.
Yeah. No, none of our, none of our parks allow camping.
So if we do allow camping, are we allowed to give it a 14-day limit or, to his point, or?
Like with the RV, RV park use?
Yeah, I mean, I've camped in places where they say you can only stay here no more than 10 days or 14 days or?
Yeah, so again, as our city planner talked about, statutorily, the city cannot impose time limits on RV parks. A property owner or a lodging owner can impose those limits as part of their business, but the city cannot restrict duration of RV camping in an RV park.
State and counties can do that. It's okay.
It's possible there's different parameters around campgrounds. So there's a difference between RV parks and campgrounds. So it's possible that it's more flexible in that context. I'm not familiar with that portion of state law, so I can't speak to that one way or the other.
Seems unlikely that the operator would want people staying there if they don't play golf.
Sounds, you know, like what you just heard from the applicant, that, you know, their, their intent is to not have it be that, so.
I have a procedural question for staff, just a mechanical question. Brian, since this isn't an ordinance, when does it take effect?
So the annexation, you approve that tonight, goes through a process with the department, you know, the state agencies. So we work through that. The zone change is, is the zone change effective with an ordinance, Chase?
So both the annexation and the zone change?
Yeah. So they will, they will come back as an ordinance. So you have a first and a second reading and then 30 days, 30 days after that.
Even if it's the state, we're dealing with ballpark idea?
So once, once it's effective, once the ordinance is effective, the annexation can move forward. So they can submit their process. It just, there's formalities that take place afterwards before, you know, the state kind of acknowledges the annexation, Department of Revenue, and there's taxing things that go into effect. But the ordinance itself is what enacts the annexation.
There's no further discussion. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:51. And I'll entertain a motion by the council.
Recommended motion on page 50.
Go ahead, David.
I move to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the annexation and zone change and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the Dallas zoning map to reflect this action.
Seconded.
Been moved by Counselor Shane and seconded by Counselor Blosser. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. If I can say that word.
Good.
All right. Public hearing number four. This is about the Historic Preservation Commission. I now declare the public hearing open at 8:52. This is a public hearing on the proposed Dallas Development Code updates to adopt updated model code language published by the State Historic Preservation Office with Dallas-specific modifications. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Seeing none. Can we have a report from the staff, please?
Chase, come up and present on this topic.
Round four.
Yes, and this one will also be quite short. So the State Historic Preservation Office, SHIPO, they, on a somewhat regular basis, they update the sort of model code for cities with regards to historic preservation. The last time they did that, we adopted what their state, what the state model code was. They have released a new version of the model code that has some different language around it. And so we're looking to adopt the new model code, same as we did the last time. So that's really kind of the gist of it. Yeah, not a lot of, not a lot to say on this one. It's just some language updates. Yeah.
Changes underline a bold, or I don't see any.
So this is a complete repeal and replace, so, in entirety. So the, I'll talk a little bit more about this just because Lane Shutterly, our former city attorney, and I really carved into the model code a lot. And so, and customized it for what we feel is appropriate for Dallas and our Historic Preservation Commission as it sits today. We took some of their model, some of the model code didn't make sense. It didn't align perfectly. And so we were able to fix certain aspects of their model code, and SHIPO thanked us for catching those things, which is great. But we did deviate quite substantially from the model code. The model code really sets up your Historic Preservation Commission or a historic body, whatever that is, as more of a decision-making body. And we wanted them to be more of an advisory body, like all your other boards and commissions are, right? So we really took a lot of the powers and authorities that were given under the model code to the Historic Preservation Commission, invested those within staff and the council, right? So really keeping the Historic Preservation Commission truly as advisory to staff for staff-level decisions or to the council if it required a public hearing, you know, for example. So that was one of the major changes that we made, which deviates from the model code language. But our former provisions really kind of bear a lot of information missing, confusing, if you were to kind of read it today. So we really went through the code with a fine-tooth comb. So what you're seeing there, one, is true to our certified local government status. So we're able to maintain that, leverage funding, grants, other things of that nature. So you have, there's certain things in there that are required federally. It also has requirements that the state would like to see, as far as we need those. And they made sense with what we envisioned the Historic Preservation Commission to be. But we did gut out a lot of the code that's there. I still think it's like 16 to 18 pages. It started, I think, in the 20s, so we were able to pare it back quite a bit. But what you have is a code that I feel is true to your advisory committee's status of your boards and commissions and makes it so you're preserving, you know, kind of the character of the town while still allowing for, you know, new development to occur. So it's a good balanced code that you have.
Questions for staff?
I don't see a definition of the Historic Preservation Officer. Who is that?
That position's our economic development specialist currently, so that would be Tyler Ferrari.
Is that defined in here somewhere?
I believe so. Let me open up the code. So on page two, I have it numbered here at the bottom, it's subsection in the definitions, 2.1050. Letter M is Historic Preservation Officer. It means the appointed, the appointed official responsible for the administration of chapter 2.10. In this case, that appointed official is our economic development specialist. It's at the bottom of, right here. So.
Sorry, which page are you on?
It says page two.
Two at the top and the bottom.
Exhibit one, page two, at the bottom, letter M.
Yep.
So that's the definition of Historic Preservation Officer.
Administration of chapter 2.10.
Yes, and 2.10 is the Historic Preservation Code.
This is getting too far down in the weeds. Just tell me if it is. But on this, on this piece of language, who does the appointing?
City manager.
Is that codified anywhere? Just trying to remove ambiguity, that's all.
Yeah, that's a great question, late at night.
That'd be in city code?
It'd be, there is, so in addition to this development code, there's going to be a municipal code text that's coming, and I believe it is specified in the municipal code. And if it's not, we can change the municipal code to make sure that's included.
Like I said, just trying to nail the ambiguity.
Yeah, you'll notice, for example, this development code does not include, you know, what the body and makeup and duties of the Historic Preservation Commission are, right? That we intentionally pulled that out of the development code because the development code's really hard to change. You have to go through a whole land use state process. Your municipal code is much more flexible, could just be changed within ordinance. All of your other boards and commissions, including the planning commission, their duties and their board makeup and all that's outlined in the municipal code. We're going to do the same thing with the Historic Preservation Commission. We already have that ordinance in that code language prepared. We'll make sure that the appointment and responsibilities aren't included in there. I believe they already are, but we'll make sure they are if they're not.
Makes sense. Good.
Yeah.
Right. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none. Do we have any from, from the public who wants to comment on this topic at this time? Seeing none. Any further discussion?
Anyone on the phone?
I'm sorry, yeah, anyone on the phone? Okay. Hearing no further discussion. I now declare the public hearing closed at 8:59. And now it's time for deliberation and motions. Do I have any deliberation or is somebody ready to make a motion?
Somebody else's turn.
I'll move to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the change and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance adopting the Dallas Development Code to reflect this action.
Seconded.
By Counselor Holzapoll and seconded by Counselor Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. We're done with public hearings.
Two solid hours.
I wish we had more. I wish we had more.
Nice try.
To promise in the future to try not giving you four public hearings in one meeting. We'll try to limit it to two in the future, so.
Hey, can we make that an ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, or resolute. Okay, now is the time for public comment. I see Ann decided not to stay with us late this evening. Does anybody like to make a public comment this evening? Do we have anyone on the phone? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I have three things on there. Approved August 4, 2025 work session meeting minutes, approved August 4, 2025 city council meeting minutes, and recommend approval of the OLCC full-on-premises liquor license for Marleons. Does anyone even want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Seconded.
Been moved by Counselor Schilling, seconded by Counselor Shane. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Reports and comments from the mayor and council members. I have nothing to report this evening. Any council members? Counselor Schilling.
Trying to keep it brief. MWA committee met again. Cloud Corner Road is now opened all directions, bridge closed. Will be a mandatory, I mean, there will be two days maximum closure for all lanes later next year, I believe. EMS will be authorized to go through on a, with flaggers only. So that's probably, I don't know if that got to you, April, or not. Center Street Bridge, when it gets closed next year?
Oh, yes.
Yes, they, they're clarifying that it will be two days only of all lane closures, and at that time you will have flaggers for the EMS vehicles to go across the bridge. It's going to be a mess. Again, I cannot.
Four days.
They've limited it down to two days from the last report we got. And then they've also put a lot of liquid damages in to make sure the project is in a timely, and the lane closures for the two lane closures is supposed to be between three and four months. I don't remember which it was. I should have written it down. And if it goes over that, the contractor will face serious penalties. Next, the number one priority by the MWA committee is continue to be the Highway 51 and 22 intersection corridor has now been broken into nine projects. Funding is looking for the actual, a dog bone portion of it, so that we actually might in the next seven, five to seven years, see that intersection have the, the overpass to Highway 51 put in, but not the frontage roads. 99 and Kings Valley will go to bid on February construction following next year. And just a side note that I thought was humorous, it's nice to move the golf course out of the amusement park because the zone change, the zoning for amusement park includes the National Guard.
Okay.
It's the only zone, it's the only Oregon zone that that fits under is amusement. So I just thought that was funny.
Any other reports from, from council members?
So I was able to go down and do the proclamation for you.
Thank you.
For, it's getting late.
Johnny Limbo.
Limbo and the lug nuts. Yeah, they were very appreciative, wanted me to pass on how much it meant to them, and so it went well.
I wasn't there for that because I, because I got there very late, but I heard several comments about what a nice job you did.
The recommendation came from the Downtown Development Association, so it wasn't my brilliant idea.
I have it on video, all the pictures, because my wife's like a tourist, so forward those to whoever wants them, but.
Were you married to one of those two?
I did, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll go on to reports from the city manager and staff. Brian?
Mayor Slacks, we have two tonight. The first one's an intergovernmental, an intergovernmental agreement with Falls City. So I'll invite our chief of the fire department to come up to talk about that. It's regarding our fire engine, which we're putting out of service for the city of Dallas. So Chief Wallace?
Mayor, city council, I am recommending that we transfer our 1995 Pierce to the city of Falls City Fire Department. And I recommend that we do this at no cost to them. The terms for this agreement, though, will come with a couple of stipulations. For three years, we would require them to maintain a fleet maintenance contract with the city of Dallas, which we currently provide maintenance to that specific engine. That all NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, required inspections will be conducted annually or as specified by the NFPA, and that Dallas Fire EMS will have the ability to utilize this engine in the event of emergency defined as both of our current fire engines are being, are inoperable. The conditions are outlined in the IGA itself. If you want to look for specific details on that.
Questions for April?
Question I had, April, is, I think it's awfully nice. We're doing this. Do they have possession of it now?
They do not.
So we may want to change the agreement, become effective on August 12 to today or whenever?
That would be correct, because we were looking at doing a transfer to them September 1st.
Change August 12 to September 1st?
Change it.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for April? Anyone? Not, thank you. Do we need a motion?
We do.
Is there a recommended motion on there?
There is. It is on page 180. I will read it. It says, "I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Dallas and the city of Falls City to transfer the 1995 Pierce fire engine from the city of Dallas to the city of Falls City, included in attachment A." So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved by Counselor Blosser and seconded by Counselor Shane. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, April.
Thank you.
So my next report, Mayor, is the July 2025 financial report. I'll invite our finance director, Cecilia Ward, to come up and to talk about this. We made some changes to this report. I don't know if you noticed, but if you didn't notice the changes, Cecilia is going to talk through what those changes are. What, as she comes up to talk about them, come on up, Cecilia. We do a report each month for senior staff to look at, and then for years, we've been doing a second report that's a little bit different, includes a lot of the same information, it's just displayed in a different way for the council. And that was a previous city manager's decision to do that. I don't like doing work twice, so we're just going to go with the report that, that we get as senior management team to use. So with that, Cecilia, you can walk through the changes.
We appreciate going with the same format, then I only have to run one report each month. But in the staff report, it's pretty clear that I put a little example of what is on the reports. It's just a different format. It's going to be the same information that senior management gets each month. So we'll have the exact same information, and just the format kind of follows the budget document, where you're going to have categories like personnel services, materials and services, and capital outlay and so forth. And it was a little harder to read in the previous report as it was all condensed into just one, one big list of all the different expenditures. And also wanted to let you know, this report also will contain, if you make any budget amendment changes through city council, that'll show under current. amendment changes through city council, that'll show under current total budget instead of the original total budget. The original follows the budget document, and then, once changes are made, it goes into the current total budget. And then, the final thing I just wanted to point out is period activity will be the month that we're talking about, and that'll be kind of an update. And if you have any questions or get lost, just let me know, and we'll get those questions answered. Yes?
So, for this report, period activity would be July?
Yes.
Okay. And also, you've got those nice bullets that explain the significance of the first three columns. Could you enlighten us with similar bullets on columns four and six?
Right, and just, you said the current period activity is July, so, and then, the next one is all the activity through the fiscal year, so it's just the month of July. So, it's, it's the same, because you just, the fiscal activity is July.
So, so, the fiscal activity number would get bigger and bigger as time went by?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And then, that just shows the variance between what was spent and the budgeted amount. And then, now, we're going to show budget remaining, because that's what senior management works off of, is budget remaining instead of budget spent. So, it's just kind of opposite.
So, for expenses, that number would be the amount that we haven't spent yet?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Any other questions for staff?
So, nothing extraordinary with this report. We just wanted to make sure, since we changed the formatting, that you had an opportunity to understand why the changes, and if you had questions or looking at it, and you're like, this looks different. It is different. But we just wanted to, again, build an efficiency in finances time, and not have them to create two reports when one report would do.
I like this format, it feels more intuitive.
Counselor Schilling?
I move to approve the July, oh, we haven't done that yet.
No, that's this, right? It's 2025 financial report.
Second.
Oh, is it? No, it wasn't on the consent agenda, so you do need to do it, yeah. So, been moved by Counselor Schilling and seconded by Counselor Blaser. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, we'll go on to second reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 1910, amending Dallas City Code Section 2.905 relating to membership of the Economic Development Commission. Do I need to say any more?
Unless there's any questions.
Any questions on that?
So, again, this was, the commission shall consist of eight members, one of whom shall be an ex officio voting member, we changed the language from non-voting to voting member, affiliated with the Polk County government. So, that's the change.
No discussion? Ask the city recorder to take a roll call vote.
Counselor Spivey?
Yes.
Counsel President Briggs?
Yes.
Counsel Bariantos?
Yes.
Counsel Blaser?
Yes.
Counsel Holzapple?
Yes.
Counsel Jants?
Yes.
Counsel Schilling?
Yes.
Counsel Shane?
Yes.
Passes its second reading. Next is ordinance number 1911, amending Dallas City Code Sections 8.910 and 8.920, removing references to permits for original art on buildings.
This is relating to murals, which, when we adopted this code back in 2021, I believe, we intended to not have permits. There was an orphan language regarding a permit, so this is just taking that out.
Ask the city recorder to take a roll call vote.
Counsel Bariantos?
Yes.
Counsel Blaser?
Yes.
Counsel Holzapple?
Yes.
Counsel Jants?
Yes.
Counsel Schilling?
Yes.
Counsel Shane?
Yes.
Counsel Spivey?
Yes.
Counsel President Briggs?
Yes.
Right, passes its second reading. Is there any other business to come before the council tonight? Yes, Counsel Shane?
Just a shout-out, I want on the record to acknowledge and thank the staff, and that includes the first responders, for the professional and expeditious way they took care of those waterline breaks.
Anyone else? If not, we will adjourn.